Time is seven o'clock. Call this meeting to work. I think, given the turnout today, we're going to move this to my dining room. So if you guys all want to... So we need certain things to have a valid town meeting. We need the cert of warrants. We need quorum, which is 15. We got it? We need our town clerk. And we have the moderator, myself, Keith Monarch. We also, over here, have our non-resident members of town meeting. Those are people who might serve the town in different capacities, as well as over here, such as the town accountant, town lawyer, other representations from the school. Is there any objection to allowing them to speak at this meeting? Okay, seeing none, they will be allowed. We also have our finance committee seated over here. If you guys could just wave your hands real quick. Big thank you to all of them for putting together the flyer that you all received, as well as all the work throughout the year. We do have openings on that committee. As you can see from the informational bulletin, we were getting really close to introducing an article that would have decreased the size of FinCon due to lack of people willing to volunteer to serve on that committee. So I'm hoping that that does not become a necessity and that we can, in fact, get that committee full in the very near future. People who make town meeting possible. We have our checkers, Lisa Posma and Anne Burgess. Our counters, Don Posma, Pam Carter, Suzanne Kane. And Andrea Cortez. And in the back, we have our constable, Carol Field. We do not currently have any mic runner tonight? Yes, we do. Excellent. Do you want to wear my Fitbit? Okay, a little bit about how a town meeting will be run. A motion is made and seconded. Afterwards, it will be a proponent's speech. After the proponent's speech, there will be question and answer. Please wait for the mic to arrive. Once it does, please state your name and address, then hand the mic back or state your question, and hand the mic back. Please make sure you're directing all questions to the moderator. After question and answer has been exhausted, we'll move on to debate. Again, direct all debate through the moderator. And once debate is exhausted or question is called, which needs a second and a two-thirds vote, you also must be recognized. In order to call the question, a vote will be taken. We'll be using various methods of voting tonight. There'll be unanimous consent. Unanimous consent, as I say, is there any dissent to passing this article? If nobody says "I dissent," or "dissent," or "no," or "bobby," doesn't really matter, then the article will pass and be considered passed unanimously. We also do the voice votes, which are the normal, all those in favor, "aye," all those opposed, "no." And then, in certain instances, we may use a standing count, at which point I would ask you to stand up and raise your voter card. Remain standing until all the votes are counted. Once I say "please be seated," please go ahead and be seated. And then we'll do the no votes, and then we'll announce the vote. So we introduced this at a couple of town meetings ago, where there could be articles that don't really, on their face value, warrant debate. They're just the routine articles that we do year after year, in which I will say, is there a motion to move the article? Someone can say it's moved, seconded, and again, do unanimous consent. It just helps us save a little bit of time. Please remember that all amendments must be in writing. They should be submitted after the Q and A, in other words, during the debate. And you must be recognized to make the motion, and the moderator must deem the motion to be within scope. And what scope is, is just basically what any reasonable person can be warned of about what might be happening at this meeting. So please keep in mind, while what we're doing is serious and has both long and short-term impacts to all of us or all neighbors, please be respectful and enjoy the process. It truly is a great one. If all the candidates for office could please stand? I want to personally thank all of you for running for office this year. People stepping forward and volunteering their time to help make their town a better place is what helps make Douglas great. So thank you very much for running. So if everyone could please stand for the pledge of leaders? Okay, is there any dissent to dispensing with the reading of the warrant for the annual town meeting? Okay, seeing none. I do have in front of me the annual town meeting warrant that is signed by the majority of the board of selectmen, as well as our constable, Carol Field. I'll now accept a motion to recess the annual town meeting until the conclusion of the special town meeting. Much of the mayors, is there a second?
Back a second.
Much of the mayors, seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying "no." Eyes have it. Is there any dissent to dispensing with the reading of the special town meeting warrant? Okay, seeing none. I also have the attested warrant in front of me that has the majority of selectmen having signed it, as well as the constable, Carol Field, on 4/17/19. So we'll move ahead. The special town meeting, and the moderator recognizes Mr. Morse.
I move at the town vote to amend the action taken on Article II of the annual town meeting of May 7, 2018, transferring from available funds the following sums of money to the following budget line items in fiscal year 2019 budget as follows. Increase selectmen wages $3,000. Increase highway maintenance $25,000. Increase ambulance wages $16,000. Increase building department expenses by $8,000. Increase Board of Health expenses by $600. Increase school transportation by $60,000. Increase community development expenses by $7,000. Decrease highway wages by $25,000. Decrease nurse wages by $5,000. Decrease insurance employee benefits by $40,600. Decrease fire wages by $16,000. Decrease Norfolk County agricultural by $26,000. Decrease assessors' expenses by $2,000. Decrease cemetery expenses by $2,500. Decrease conservation expenses by $1,000. And decrease zoning Board of Appeals expenses by $1,500.
Much of the mayors, is there a second?
Back a second.
You have the floor.
So this motion makes transfers within the current year's budget that will allow the town to adjust its spending to address unanticipated events and remain within the approved total operational expense budget.
Any questions?
Keith Monarch, 70 Martin Road. Just wondering for an explanation on the increase in school transportation for $60,000.
Over here? Come on up. This is the closest mic.
No mic.
Yeah, come on up.
I guess, $10,000, Courtney Keegan, School Business and Operations Manager. $10,000 is for a vendor to review the school bus transportation routes, and $50,000 is for special education transportation, unanticipated expenditures.
Is there a question answered?
Yes.
Any follow-up?
No.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article I passes unanimously. Mr. Morse?
So Article II is to increase the FY '19 debt principal and interest. I move at the town vote to transfer the total sum of $316,271.26, consisting of the sum of $2,259.40 from Article IV, May 1, Special Town Meeting, Fire Rescue Pumper Truck Account, the sum of $3,273.91 from the school construction project funds, as approved by Article I of the Special Town Meeting of March 28, 2011, the sum of $1,539 from Article V of the May 1, 2017, Special Town Meeting, Highway Catch Base and Cleaner Truck Sander Plow Account, and the sum of $309,198.95 from the reserve production of the excluded debt account to the total debt services account.
Much of the mayors, seconded. Do you have the floor?
Approval of this motion will allow the Finance Department to utilize unexpended funds from certain capital purchase line items as funds set aside previously in a reserve account for the purpose of making all necessary payments associated with refinancing one of the town's bonds to a lower interest rate.
Any questions on Article II? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article II unanimously? Seeing none, Article II passes unanimously. Article III?
Snow and ice account transfer. I move at the town vote to transfer the sum of $145,000 from free cash to the FY '19 snow and ice account.
Okay, much of the mayors, is there a second? Much of the mayors, seconded. You have the floor?
This motion will allow the town to use free cash to cover all of the expenses for the past winter in excess of the amount budgeted at the May 18, 2018 annual town meeting.
Any questions on Article III? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article III? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article III unanimously? Okay, Article III passes unanimously. Article IV, Mr. Cortez?
I move at the town vote to transfer the sum of $227,370 from free cash to the Insurance Employee Benefits Account to fund the equity buy-in required by the Mass Strategic Health Group, a regional joint purchasing group formed for the purpose of providing medical claims coverage for participating town employees.
Much of the mayors, is there a second?
Second.
Much of the mayors, seconded. Do you have the floor?
The town is going to enter into a joint purchasing agreement for the administration of its health insurance benefits for its employees. The town will no longer purchase health insurance from the company. It will instead hire a third-party administrator who will collect funds from the town to pay eligible health claims by beneficiaries. This so-called self-insured approach requires an upfront deposit, excuse me, to allow for the payment of claims received before the self-insurance fund has collected its first monthly bill from participating towns. Approval of this motion will provide a full month's estimated claims payments for the deposit into the equity account of the joint purchasing group.
Much of the mayors, is there a second?
Second.
Much of the mayors, seconded. Do you have the floor? Any questions for Mr. Cortez? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, the article passes unanimously. Article V, you threw me off my game.
I threw that one off.
Only playoff teams.
I see. That's the defending world champions.
No, they're in a current season.
All right, you're up.
Article V, I move at the town vote to transfer funds from the following accounts, the sum of $145,000, to supplement the purchase of a new ambulance and all associated equipment as follows. Transfer for free cash, $86,933. Transfer from the municipal gym door replacement account, Article III, from 5/7/18, $7,408. Transfer from the police floor renovation account, Article IX, from 5/1/17, $1,631. Transfer from the fire station bay exhaust account, Article XI, from 5/7/18, $6,736. Transfer from the cardiac monitor defibrillator account, Article III, from November 6, 2017, $2,001. Transfer from the ambulance and associated equipment account, Article XI, from 5/7/18, $1,459. Transfer from school tractor loader account, Article III, from 5/7/18, $1,087. Transfer from Douglas High School AC compressor account, Article III, from 5/7/18, $730. Transfer from DMS door card reader account, Article III, from 5/7/18, $3,061. Transfer from DHS water booster account, Article XI, from 5/7/18, $4,272. Transfer from brush chipper account, Article III, 5/7/18, $13,062. Transfer from asphalt box account, Article III, from 5/7/18, $1,542. Transfer from F-550 dump truck with plow account, Article III, from 5/7/18, $7,659. And transfer from F-550 dump truck with plow account, Article XI, 5/7/18, $7,419.
Any questions? Seconded? Any questions on this article? If you want to give a next question.
Do you want to give a next question? I thought it was a pretty simple one.
All right, guys. Go ahead.
It's much shorter. The town received a state grant of $100,000 for the purchase of a new ambulance. Approval of this motion will allow the town to use unexpended funds from a number of completed capital projects to supplement the grant. The balance of the estimated cost of the ambulance will be covered with free cash and is also noted in the motion.
All right, now, any questions? Over here?
Ryan Hogan, Donlin Wetz. I understand the reason for buying the ambulance in consecutive years. I was just wondering, is there any plan to stagger their usage so at their end of life we're not buying appliances so close together in the future?
Chief, do you want to field that one? Do we know where the second mic went?
The answer to that question is yes. Our intention has always been to spread our ambulances out and to rotate them, but we've always had issues with ones as they were so old, so that made it more difficult. So the answer to that question is yes.
Questions been answered? Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, the article passes unanimously. Article VI, do we have a representative from the library? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Danielle Morrow. I'm the acting chair for the Board of Library Trustees. I move at the town vote to transfer the sum of $9,800 from free cash for the purchase and installation of a security system in the Simon Field Library. Said system is to include motion detection, door contact sensors, and an alarm system to prevent break-ins, and all associated costs to include, but is not limited to, an eight-channel closed-circuit TV monitoring system covering the interior of the library, as well as the parking lot and front area, including the book drop.
Much of the mayors, is there a seconded?
Second.
Much of the mayors, seconded. Do you have the floor?
Any questions? Security has been an issue. There's been vandalism around the outside of the building and the book drop area, and also materials that are mysteriously leaving the library. So we're trying to put a stop to those things.
Questions? Over here?
Jeremy Flansburgh, 63 Monroe Street.
Can you go ahead and take the mic?
Jeremy Flansburgh, 63 Monroe. Is there any consideration to the signage? Because I believe, because I work for a municipality, that if it's not stated on the building that there is a CCTV camera, you can't use the film for evidence. So I think you might want to include signage on the building that says that they're being camouflaged.
I believe there would be signage on the building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article VI passes unanimously. And I'll now take a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Much of the mayors, seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying "no." Eyes have it. Special meeting is dissolved, and we will now move on to the annual town meeting. FinCon. Do you want to come up here? Okay.
Hello. Mr. Moderator, I move, or the Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to hear an act upon the report and recommendations of the Finance Committee, and further to fix the salary and compensation of elected officials as presented in the Finance Committee's FY ' '20 budget recommendation, and further to approve a total budget of $28,235,626, consisting of $15,629 transferred from reserved for reduction of excluded debt account, $320,000 transferred from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, $20,000 transferred from the Wetlands Protection Fund, and the remaining $27,879,997 to be raised and appropriated. All is set forth in the column entitled FY '20: Finance Committee Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Recommended Budget, and the handout you have received. Finance Committee Budget Message for Fiscal Year 2020 for the purpose of funding the annual operating budget of the town for the fiscal year 2020.
Much of the mayors, and there's a second. So before we go into this any further, I just wanted to explain how this process works. This is the summary that you would see in the informational bulletin, and we're going to go ahead and read each heading. If you have any questions on something that is found under that heading, please yell "hold," and we'll go back to that. And then, at the end of everything, we will take the budget in totality. And then I have my Gene Clause, which is, just because we are discussing the headings does not mean that all these specific line items don't apply. Is that good enough to you? Okay. Would you like to go ahead and read the headings?
Do you want me to read those? I'll read the left-hand corner.
And just give a brief pause in between each one, please.
Is it still working? Yes. Okay, we have travel general government expenses, $1,560,629.
Would you like me to do it?
No.
You got it?
I need water, I need a glass. That's what happens when you count. $1,560,639 for general government. Any thoughts? No? Public safety? We have public works? Total health and human services? Total culture and recreation? Total education?
Okay, so hold on, education?
I heard "hold."
Yep.
Do you want to wait till the end?
No. Yeah, wait till it, keep going.
Okay. Total insurance and employee benefits? Total debt service? Total budget request? Go back to public safety?
There was a call on... On education. Where was that call?
Eric Campbell, ZD One Lane Road. Usually, one of the biggest line loads of education is transportation. And I'm just wondering, it's about 10% of the overall budget. I wonder if you could explain, if anything's being done to take a look at the transportation cost. I'm not fully with the specifics and details, but it seems like there must be ways that we can look at and do some transportation costs, given the fact that most people have transportation and other means of transport.
I know, I know, people may look at that, but I'm not the expert on that side.
We'll go ahead and defer that over to Courtney.
Courtney Keegan, Business and Operations Manager. I guess it has had an increase. First, I want to point out that we have the regular in-district transportation, and we also have special transportation that's included in that line. And therein lies the largest percentage of expenditures, is the special education transportation. It does vary. There are some years when it actually has decreased, but we have had an increase in the number of students. Also, they go to a variety of schools throughout the state of Massachusetts and into Providence, Rhode Island. We are mandated to provide that transportation. On the regular, well, I should say, the in-district transportation, that's both for regular education and special education in-district students. The last contract when we went out, it went up 5.9%. And again, the largest increase is the special education transportation. But that being said, the... But that being said, the, as I stated earlier, there was a contractor hired to take a look at the routes. The school committee has voted to reduce a route. I do want to say, though, that it was not easy to come to that reduction of one route. We're going to see how it goes. Actually, at the beginning of this fiscal year, Telstone, our current vendor, and I actually already came to that conclusion, but we realized it was really, really tight. But we are going ahead with trying to reduce the route and see what happens. We do have a number of, a large number of new kindergartners coming into town and have registered for kindergarten, beginning in the 2019, 2020 school year. So that's one of the several reasons we may have to increase, bring that route actually back, after going through all that of reducing it. But that remains to be seen. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does.
Are you referring to questions?
Just, just a thought, something to think about. Is there any, any proposals about transferring responsibility, transporting students from taxpayer to the parents?
Oh, as far as, okay, I think what you mean is that, yeah, actually, we have, several years in a row, we have looked at, I think what you're referring to is charging a transportation fee, and that was looked at. And I know there are some districts that do do that, but the school committee voted not to do that. I do want to, you know, inform the voters that each, each individual town is quite different. The geographical area is different. We do have a large, as you know, a large town force, and some of the routes have to drive, some of the buses have to drive a long, long way, and you need to get them to school in time as well. You don't want them really on the bus for more than an hour. So there are some, some complexities. Also, beyond that, with regard to transportation services in general, I don't know if you're aware, but there is a school bus driver shortage, and what they need to do to try to obtain and retain quality bus drivers has been an issue as well. Four years ago, a very large transportation vendor in Massachusetts, and actually in other states nationwide, actually went bankrupt in November of the school year, which was, luckily, we did not have that company. But that, there's been a decrease in the number of vendors as well. So there are a number of factors. I do understand that it has increased, but we have taken a look at it to the extent possible. But again, I want to remind you that the largest, by far the largest increase, is the special education transportation, and that's something that's mandated. And again, it's to a large number of schools all throughout the state of Massachusetts and even into Providence, Rhode Island, so that really is the bulk of it. But we have looked at that as well.
Other questions? Okay. Over here. Please wait for the microphone. And the reason why, for that, just so everyone knows, it's, you know, you have...
Jeremy Flansburgh, sixty-three Monroe. Does the bus company pity excise taxes like I just pity on my truck?
Yes, they do. Actually, in prior districts, and even back when I was on the town side as a finance director and collector, we do try to make it such that the buses do need to park their vehicles in the town, so that the town can receive the excise revenue, and they do, in fact, do that in Douglas as well.
So the reason why we ask everybody to speak into the mic is not only for, to be able to hear in this room, but everything is broadcast on our local cable channel, and if it doesn't get into the mic, it doesn't get into the TV. Does that sound right back? Good, okay. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the budget? Okay, also seeing none. All those in favor of Articles one, two, and three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes have it unanimously. Article four.
The Finance Committee recommends, and I move, that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars for its operating capital assessment by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District. The district for fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand nineteen, which is inclusive of forty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-one dollars of Prop. two-and-a-half exempted funds to be applied against debt service associated with Douglas's previously, in two thousand and one, voted amount for the district's addition renovation project.
Motion made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. You have the floor.
This was pulled out of the regular budget and is written and read separately at town meeting, as requested by the district, the Blackstone Valley School District.
Okay. Any questions on the article? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes have it by a clear majority. I will now take a motion to move Articles five, six, and seven as printed in the warrant. Motion made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. As we started last year, these are enterprise funds, which are basically the money that is self-funded in order to make these departments run. There is an expected increase here over year, so we are kind of starting to take these out of the main rotation of debate, and just authorizing them from the floor. So with that said, are there any questions on Articles five, six, and seven? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Articles five, six, and seven? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Articles five, six, and seven? Articles five, six, and seven pass unanimously. Article eight, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve the reoccurring businesses written in the warrant.
Motion made and seconded. You have the floor.
Every year, the town must approve use of funds from various revolving accounts and other minor funding sources to operate various programs for which the revolving funds have been specifically set aside. The motion proposes that the recurring business as printed in the warrant be approved.
Any questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article eight unanimously? Article eight passes unanimously. Article nine, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to approve the personnel classification and compensation plans for fiscal year 2020 as written in the warrant.
Motion made and seconded. You have the floor.
The motion is to approve the personnel classification plan, which includes two changes. The classification plan is proposed to include a working foreman at the highway department, which will consolidate two part-time positions in the personnel system and unify their job descriptions. The plan also proposes reclassifying the senior center director to a compensation level equal to that of the library director, given the provisions of the Massachusetts Pay Equity Act. The compensation plan includes a one-point-seven-five-percent cost of living adjustment for non-union employees, the same as last year. The board of selectmen approve the budget with these personnel classifications and compensation proposals.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article nine passes unanimously. Article ten, Chief Benson.
Mr. Ruff, Moderator, I think that the town will vote to approve the Town Douglas FY twenty to twenty-four capital improvement plan as submitted by the Capital Improvement Committee by transferring the sum of seventeen thousand from the cable receipts reserved for appropriation and five-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars from free cash, or transfer the sum for a total of six-hundred-and-one thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars to fund the following capital projects as follows. Public safety and highway department radio system and associated expenses, one-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. Municipal center resource room sound system upgrades and ADA compliance, eighteen thousand. Municipal center backup generator and associated expenses, one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. Highway dump truck with sander and plow and related costs, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars. Police tablet and related expenses, thirty thousand. Senior center flooring replacement and associated costs, twenty-four thousand. Town clerk voting machines and related expenses, twenty-three thousand, for a total of six-hundred-and-one thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Motion made and seconded. You have the floor.
The five-year capital plan is reviewed and edited each year by the Capital Improvement Committee. The motion asked for approval of the plan as submitted by the committee, which includes funding and projects listed in the warrant. The Capital Improvement Committee ranks projects using a grading system and prioritized proposals based upon their impact. Public safety and alleviation of risk of injury or violation of a legal requirement were the priority objectives for the fiscal 2020 capital budget. If approved, these projects will be funded with free cash in the cable department receipts reserved for appropriation account, and thus do not factor into the tax levy for the next year.
Any questions on this article? Over here.
I have two questions.
Say your name, Cortez.
Mark Luntchel, Twenty Depot Street.
Thank you.
My first question, can I ask two questions or not?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Says here municipal center backup generator. I believe when we redid the school a few years ago, there was a generator available from that project. Do you know whatever happened to that generator? That's my first question. My second question is regarding the old fire station. I don't see anything on the capital improvement project for any repairs to that. It looks like it's about to fall down. Is there any plan for any work to be done on that?
Thank you.
All right, as far as, as far as the fire station goes, the old fire station, I'll let Adam Furno answer that question. He's the town facilities, building and facilities manager.
Adam Furno, Maintenance Manager, Town Douglas. The old fire station, we have no plans at this point. Unfortunately, it looks like a lost cause. It's been many years with neglect, and no money would be put into it, and that's probably what's going to end up happening, is we're going to have to take it down at some point. As for the backup generator, that generator went to highway garage. We have that in the highway department now that runs the highway department, which we didn't have one before.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article ten unanimously? Seeing none, Article ten passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I beg your forgiveness for my attire tonight. The time got away from me down at the ball field, so, but don't worry about it, I'll hear it from my wife for certain. I move that the town vote to accept Sections fifty-one and fifty-two of Chapter twenty-seven of the Acts of two thousand nine, amending mass general law in chapter sixty-four G, Section three A, to take effect on July one, two thousand nineteen, at six percent on the rental rooms in hotels, motels, lodging houses, and bed and breakfast establishments in the town as provided by law.
Motion made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. You have the floor.
Approval of this motion will give the town the authority under state law to levy a local tax on the short-term rental of rooms in the town. Adoption of this statute will also give the town the ability to regulate the development of the short-term rental business under its local bylaws, should it become necessary to do so, but only after another town meeting vote. Approval of this motion will give the board of selectmen options to address the short-term rental industry, should it become more established in town.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article eleven unanimously? Seeing none, Article eleven passes unanimously. Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve a proposed new personnel bylaw so as to replace the existing version, the proposed text, as on file in the office of the town clerk.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Thank you. The passage of the special act creating the town administrator and finance director for the Town of Douglas and the town's adoption of its provisions in two thousand and twelve made some town bylaws obsolete and in need of substantial revision. The revised personnel bylaw will bring the personnel system of the town to line with its town administrator law, which makes the administrator the personnel director primarily responsible for the day-to-day implementation of the job descriptions, contracts, discipline, and other human resources matters. The revision also clarifies that town employees are eligible for vacation time, limiting the benefit only to full-time employees of the town.
Any questions?
L H S Road, Seventeen Church Street. I have a multi-part question, just to make it one. Was there a public hearing held on this amendment? Why is that, is vacation and personal day eliminating department heads from getting that benefit, or what, how are they getting it? And the third part of the question is, is a personal bylaw necessary if the town administrator has the strength that he does have to run the personnel?
Matt, you want to take those?
The first part of Ms. Chesbro's question...
Go ahead and say your name and position, please.
Mr. Moderator, Matt Woltchek, Tom Miss.
You know, why don't you guys switch mics? There you go, use that one, too. Go ahead and turn that, yeah, just put that one away from you. Great, thank you.
That can work?
Perfect.
All right. Mr. Moderator, Matt Woltchek, Tom Miss. And to answer Ms. Chesbro's three-part question, was there a public hearing on the amendment? The board of selectmen posted for its regular business the consideration of the warrant and discussed the contents of this being part of the warrant. I don't know if that is a specific form of public hearing you're asking about, but there was a public posting and public discussion. The second part of your question, just to clarify what the amendment does, right now the bylaw reads, "department heads and full-time employees of the town." I'm striking out department heads, because all of our department heads are full-time except for one. We needed to clarify, as a result of some litigation that's been filed, that under no circumstances are part-time employees of the town anticipated to benefit from vacation time. They're part-time. And when we, when the personnel bylaw was first passed, all the department heads were full-time, so it wasn't really a consideration. But when the building position was reduced to half-time, we now have a half-time department head, so we needed to clarify that. And then lastly, is the bylaw even necessary? And I would say, yes, it is. It's a matter of record of various benefits and other... It's a matter of record of various benefits and other considerations that town meeting has extended to its employees, not the town administrator. So the town administrator's job is to implement the bylaw, not to make one.
Did your question been answered? Do you have follow-up? Okay, other questions? Saying none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes clearly have it. Article thirteen. Here again. Let me get on the right page. Here we go. Okay, take it away.
I move that the town vote to amend the Doug, Town of Douglas bylaws by inserting the following. Article one, Town Meeting, Section thirteen, editorial revisions. A, the town clerk is authorized to assign appropriate numbers or letters to bylaws, sections, subsections, paragraphs, and subparagras where none are approved by town meeting. And if such numbering or lettering is approved by town meeting, to make non-substantive editorial revisions to the same, to ensure consistent and appropriate sequencing and numbering, and to make non-substantive editorial revision to references regarding such numbering or lettering as contained within the bylaws to ensure accuracy and conformity. B, all such editorial revisions shall be identified with a footnote which describes the revision and the reason therefore.
Second, second. Motion made, second, you have the floor.
Approval of this motion will amend the town's general bylaws to allow the town clerk to make numbering and sequencing and other non-substantial changes to general bylaws after town meeting approval, without having to bring the minor changes back to town meeting for additional action.
Any questions? Over here.
I'm a mass-certified...
Still, still name and address each time.
Jeremis Lansburg, sixty-three Monroe Street. I don't know if my statute that this is even allowable. If it is my law, then fine, but I, I mean, if it's approved and it's on paper, I think it has to fly. I could be wrong, but I, I don't know if it's, if it's legal, fine, but I don't think it is.
If only we had a legal guy here to ask. Is there a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rich Bowen, Town Council three, the previous speaker. I believe it is legal. Of course, if it's approved, the Attorney General will review it and make her own determination as to its legality. But I think the key element here is that this gives the town clerk to assign sections or letters, and I'll just quote from the proposal, where none are approved by town meeting, with the requirement that there be a footnote where the town clerk should make the question aside. So the purpose of it is just to make the bylaws more readable. It doesn't allow the town clerk to make substantive changes to the content of bylaws that were adopted by town meeting.
Follow-up question? Or is your question been answered?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Right here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Anne Holmes, Chairman of the Finance Committee. And I don't believe this was asked. Will, will the town clerk be the sole person responsible or will this be overs, will she be handing it to someone to provide oversight? And perhaps that would be our able town council.
Mr. Bowen. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for you, the previous speaker, Rich Bowen, Town Council. The way the proposal was drafted, it reserves the right solely to the town clerk, specifically Section thirteen A, the town clerk is authorized to assign.
Question been answered? Okay, other questions? In the back?
It seems to me, though, that that puts a lot of ability to change the way something that has been approved by town meeting is read, which could lead to various interpretations. I think it should have to come back to town meeting and be approved.
Okay, what was the question?
It was a comment.
Okay. Other questions? What was the question? Can clarify that. This is your last question?
Jeremis Lansburg, sixty-three Monroe Street. If they were even, if the town clerk was to revise something or clarify something or make a minor change, does this have to be re-advertized, the local paper, the, you know? And that's what I'm just, because obviously the wording is going to change. Something is going to be added, maybe deleted, or a date's going to change, something's going to change. Does this have to be, I mean, shouldn't there be a public hearing or a board meeting about this, I would think?
Okay, I'm going to defer that question to the town clerk.
Hi, Christine Brown, Town Clerk. What this does is, this, so there's no duplication in the bylaws. So say if it's section six point six, and there was another six point six, we can change it to six point seven as it should be. There's no wording changes, it's just going to be numbering, assigning a subsection if there was a duplicate subsection. So anything that is approved at town meeting is going to be in those bylaws. It's just a matter of numbering is what this is for.
Other questions? Okay, saying none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
The ayes clearly have it. Article fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve the filing of a request with the inter-agency permitting board under the provisions of general law, Chapter forty-three D, as accepted by the May seventh, two thousand and seven, town meeting, for removal of designation as priority development sites of certain parcels of land located in the area of Route sixteen near the Webster Town Line, as more specifically identified in the town assessor's records as map two oh six lots one and two, map two oh seven lots one and two, and map two thirty lot two.
Second. Motion made, second, you have the floor.
In two thousand and seven, town meeting designated parcels for expedited permitting under the relevant provisions of state law. These parcels are located on the Webster Line. With the passage of time, the town's best economic development potential has moved to other areas of town. This article and the one which follows would allow the town to remove the designation of less desirable parcels and place it on other lots in town where development proposals have been made. Expedited permitting is an important assurance provided to business interests looking to make large investments in town. The Board of Selectmen requests town meeting make these changes to allow the town to maintain an attractive and competitive economic development atmosphere.
Questions? Okay, saying none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also saying none, is there any dissent to passing Article fourteen unanimously? Saying none, Article fourteen passes unanimously. Article fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Following right along, I move that the town vote to approve the filing of a formal proposal with the inter-agency permitting board pursuant to the provisions of general law forty-three D, as accepted by the May seventh, two thousand and seven, town meeting, for the designation as priority development sites of certain parcels of land located in northeast Douglas off Aron in the vicinity of Route sixteen and Uxbridge Street near the Albridge Town Line, as more specifically identified in the town assessor's records as map one sixty-six lot fifteen, map one sixty-seven lots one and two, and map one ninety-two lots one and five.
Second. Motion made, second, you have the floor.
Approval of this motion will allow the town to request that certain lots on Route sixteen, Davis Street, near the Uxbridge Town Line, be given expedited permitting status under state law. Expedited permitting gives a developer the opportunity to rely upon time limits for local regulatory action and thus plan the entire project with reliable timeframes. The Board of Selectmen requests town meeting make these changes to allow the town to maintain an attractive and competitive economic development atmosphere.
Any questions on Article fifteen? Right here.
Eric Campbell, Seventeen Woodland Road. Has the current permitting been headed into development so far? In other words, has somebody been discouraged in the past from developing because of permitting standards?
Well, under this, under this particular provision, the town is obligated, if a developer has all his plans in line, to approve a project one way or the other within six months. Unfortunately, nobody has, has relied upon this, but the area that we're taking off of, there's, now most of it's in the state forest. The new area is we have some interest from developers to work in that area, so we're trying to make it attractive and encourage them to see that the town will get its act together, certainly within six months, if they do everything they're supposed to do.
Do you have follow-up? Any question answered or do you have a follow-up? Okay, other questions? Right here.
Mark Monju, Twenty Depot Street. Obviously, the landowners know that this designation is being placed on their land, and I'm just wondering why they're not contiguous parcels instead of two parcels down on Route sixteen and then one big large parcel.
Thank you.
I believe one reason, and maybe the town administrator can confirm this, is that some of the other parcels are being in land court, trying to acquire title, and so that's why I think the, not all of the land is contiguous, and it requires the consent of the property owner before you can get this designation.
Do you have anything you want to add to that, Matt? No? Okay, is your question been answered? You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Are all these parcels owned by one landowner or are they different landowners?
Several property owners.
Thank you. Other questions? Right in the back? No, right behind you. Here's first.
Larry Hoover, Hudson Street, Douglas. Lot net land, it's off, it's owned in one land. Has anybody ever checked on that?
Okay, question on weapon. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead and hand the mic back, please.
As a matter of fact, one of the developers is going through the weapons process right now and flagging weapons area, so that's certainly a consideration in developing in that area.
Question?
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
Is that considered going to be a much of industrial park?
Go ahead and hand the mic back, please.
Hopefully.
Question?
Nope, we got to move on. Next question. More questions? Please be seated, sir. Right over here.
Victor Vakiany.
Please wait until you get the mic.
Victor Vakiany, fourteen Maple Street. Because of the activity in this area that encompasses the turnpike, the railroad trestle, and we are on the backside of it, I have gone to the assessor's office to look at the maps to try to assess what the railroad track is actually going to entail. In doing so, I found that coming from, I don't know if it's been done yet or whether it's coming, but coming from the Oxbridge line is a mobile gas line which goes perpendicular right alongside the industrial area that is the railroad track. It moves along, and then it takes a sharp turn up and goes up Depot Street, goes across Railroad Avenue, goes across Franklin Street, and goes all the way down from there. Where it goes from there, I do not know, but it also comes up from the south as well as coming from Oxbridge. And I am just wondering if anyone has checked those maps to see that there is a mobile gas line that is in our area, running along the front line, partially.
And does this have to do with, with this parcel of land here?
It is part and parcel of it coming from Oxbridge. It is coming from Oxbridge. It shows up on Article seventeen, which is Isabella Lane, which is part of Maple Street, before it comes to Martin Road.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with these parcels of land?
It does, it shows the pipeline coming from Oxbridge there. It shows that mobile gas line coming from Oxbridge, running along the pipeline, running along, running along the turnpike.
Okay, respectfully, I've asked a few times now, and we need to move on. That question, if, if it has something to do with Article seventeen, then that would be the time to ask it?
Well, it does, it has to do with this as well, because it starts and originates in Oxbridge. And the pipeline comes along, the mobile gas pipeline comes along through that area.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll ask one more time. Does it go through any of these parcels?
It goes, it, it goes somewhere in this area exactly. I can't tell, but I had my maps with me, and you can see it. You can see it on the maps I brought.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next question. Other questions? Over here.
Jeremis Lansburg, sixty-three Monroe Street. I basically where it says between Tennessee and street, I own where it says street and down, I own seventy-three, Davis, sixty-three Monroe, fifty-three Monroe, seven, forty-two, forty-six Monroe, and Rutherford's twenty-nine Monroe. So the meets and bounds, what's being proposed here is incorrect. They're showing it to the, my side of, of the Tennessee gas line, which is incorrect. I'm vehemently opposed to this whole thing where it says street.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off there. Is there a question coming?
Can we re-correct the, the meets and bounds to make this, because everybody in the permitting board tells me that the meets and bounds is not affecting me and it's on my property.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Kondif, Town Engineer. The article in the map is based upon the assessor's mapping and not necessarily meets and bounds per se. It's, it's intended to include the properties and the limits of the properties, so if there's an error shown on that boundary line where Tennessee gas is, I would take that up with the assessor's office as not showing it correctly. I think it's probably shown correctly, but that would be the issue between them on where the boundary is. But the intent is for the map and parcels that are... But the intent is for the map and parcels that are identified.
You have a follow-up?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. The mic.
Why is there a, looks like from the far upper left-hand corner, a, there is no lot there, but why is it appear that they're setting it up for an easement to come out to Monroe Street?
Tell me where we're looking at.
Come down a little bit, right there. There's that line right there.
This one here?
Yeah, and the one right below.
This one here.
Those, they don't exist. Why, if we approve this tonight, that's what we're all approving, and that don't exist.
Follow-up, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Kundev, Town Engineer. Again, I want to reiterate, this is simply our assessor's mapping. It has not been edited, other than the red hatched lines you see on the map. Again, the intent is only to portray the parcels, the assessor's map and parcels that pertain to this article.
I might add, this doesn't eliminate the need for property owners that are included to consent to development at the site, so this is merely providing incentive to attract business to this area, and there is parcels being acquired to develop this into an industrial park for the town.
You've had your two questions. We need to move on to the next questions. Other questions?
Captain Hoist, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, 17 Churchill Board. So just for clarification, we're only voting on what's sitting in the red patch mark area, nothing else on the map.
Okay. Bill nods his head and saying that is correct. And just for clarification, that's what all of this means, the town assessor's records and, you know, I'm taking, you know, in faith that this is all correct here, but the, you know, that's what all of this is saying is that it's these parcels here. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Over here.
Nancy Philbrook of Oxbridge Street. The meeting that we went to last month, we were told that Oxbridge Street would not be used as an access road to get to the industrial park.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. Let me just see if I can get you a little volume. I'm having a hard time hearing you. No? Okay. Go ahead.
We were told that Oxbridge Street would not be used as an access road to the industrial park. Can you tell me if that's going to be carried through with?
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, this article is a separate one than the one we have the planning board hearing on. That article is forthcoming, and you will see what we discuss. This is separated for permitting timelines on those parcels.
Okay, seeing none. Would anyone like to speak on the article? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please, and all those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
I'm not going to be able to call that one. All those in favor, please stand and show your voter cards. All those opposed, please stand and show your voter cards. You may be seated. Article 15 requires a simple majority. Article 16.
Good evening. I move to approve Article 16 as presented in the warrant.
Motion made. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. You have a floor?
Our previous motion proposed giving the town clerk the authority to make minor revisions to approved general bylaws and bylaw amendments. Since the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws are separate documents, a second vote is required to give the town clerk the authority to make insubstantial edits to zoning bylaws. Approval of this motion will improve the efficiency of town government by allowing the clerk to make small changes to approved text without having to return to town meeting. I would also like to submit the following planning board report. On Tuesday, April 9, 2019, the planning board held a public hearing to review and discuss proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws by inserting the following. Section 1.0 Purpose and Authority, subsection 1.7 Editorial Revisions. A, the town clerk is authorized to assign appropriate numbers or letters to bylaw sections, subsections, paragraphs, and subparagras where none are approved by town meeting. And if such numbering or lettering is approved by town meeting, to make non-substantive editorial revisions to the same, to ensure consistent and appropriate sequencing and numbering, and to make non-substantive editorial revision to references regarding such numbering or lettering as contained within the bylaws to ensure accuracy and conformity. All such editorial revisions shall be identified with a footnote which describes the revision and the reason therefore. The planning board closed a public hearing on the same evening and voted unanimously to issue a favorable report to town meeting regarding the proposed changes. Sincerely, Tracy Sharkey, Vice Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mark Montjo, 20 Depot Street. I'm just a little confused as to why if the planning board is the overseer of the zoning board or of the zoning laws, why the town clerk is the one making the changes or edits?
Being the town clerk, when there's approval at town meeting for amendments, they're sent to the attorney general. Once the attorney general approves them, they then go into the zoning bylaws, which I take that information and put it into the zoning bylaws, being that the planning board, you guys have the authority on the zoning bylaws, so they have to have a public hearing on it. Makes sense?
Your question answered? Okay, seeing none. Would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none. Is there a dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article 16 passes unanimously. Article 17.
I move to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant, excluding however Hall Street as shown on a plan entitled Hall Terrace, Douglas Mass., dated May 26, 1978 by John R. Andrews Jr. and on record at the Worcester Country County Registry of Deeds as Plan Book 336, Plan 47.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. You have a floor?
The town has identified the eastern boundary of Douglas along Route 16 as a focal point for economic development efforts. Bringing the various lots entirely within the industrial zone will clarify that loud uses in that area don't prevent the need for extensive zoning relief as a result. The exclusion of Hall Street came at the request of the Economic Development Commission to ensure that in the event of future development, no industrial traffic would be able to access or egress the site using Hall Street. The Board of Selectmen requests approval of this motion to allow various development discussions to move forward. I would also like to submit the following planning board report. On Tuesday, April 9, 2019, the planning board held a public hearing to review and discuss proposed amendments to the Douglas zoning bylaws as follows. One, by amending the zoning map as codified through section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws, by moving the following assessor's maps, parcels, 165, 27, 166, 13, 166, 14, 166, 15, and 168, 7, from the rural agricultural zoning district to the industrial zoning district in their entirety. Two, by amending the zoning map as codified through section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws, by moving the easterly portion of assessor's map, 1.165, parcel 30, from the rural agricultural zoning district to the industrial zoning district, using the westerly easement line of the Tennessee gas pipeline as the boundary line location. Planning board closed the public hearing on the same evening and voted to issue a favorable report to town meeting regarding the proposed changes. Sincerely, Tracy Sharkey, Planning Board Vice Chair.
Any questions on Article 17? Right here.
Pam Holmes, Chairman of Finance Committee, 108 Maple Street. This is not the wording that was presented in the finance committee, and I have a question as to why.
Sure.
Or is it the wording that's presented in the document that we held up?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Kundev, Town Engineer. This request, as Tracy indicated, came as a result of the Economic Development Commission. It was at the planning board hearing, but it was not at the finance committee meeting for your vote. The motion was modified, and it reduces the scope of the article. It does not expand the scope of the article. So the amount of rezoning that's being proposed is less than what was in the original article. So moderator's view, with due respect, Mr. Moderator, was that it was within the scope of the article.
So to expand on that just a little bit, they came to be with a revision in the motion, and we were trying to decide the best way to handle that, whether it was going to be through an amendment, and I suggested that we just make it part of the main motion, as it was still within the scope of the original article. So that's why it varies slightly from what is printed in the warrant. Other questions? Right here.
Mitchell Gakianmi, 14 Maple Street. It varies completely with what has been shown to us, and it also shows that there is coming or is a mobile gas line running along the trunk line, comes up onto Depot Street, runs across Railroad Avenue, runs across Franklin Street, through Eagleview and off. It also comes up from this area from the south and intersects the Tennessee pipeline. Is that known to anyone in town that there is a gas line sitting under some of the town? That is my question.
Okay. And you're saying that the gas line is located within this area?
Yes, it comes over from Oxbridge, and it comes up from the south, and it runs close and around the Tennessee pipeline.
I'll try one more time. The parcels of land that are shaded.
It is extremely convenient that it has been shortened so completely.
Okay.
It is very unusual because this just came out, and already it's been modified.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The article needs a two-thirds majority in order to pass. I believe that it clearly has that. Article 17 passes. Article 18.
I move to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Motion made and seconded. You have a floor?
This proposal came about as a policy initiative of the Board of Selectmen. The board recommends putting in place inadequate zoning designation, use definition, and use table structure to allow for wedding venue in the village business district. Specifically, this proposal will connect existing village business zoned parcels by rezoning the intervening land from village residential to village business. The land to be rezoned includes the parcel commonly known as the Schuster Mansion, a large historic home that the board would prefer to see reused as a commercial enterprise instead of torn down or redeveloped into a higher density use. The planning board will have to issue a special permit for the wedding venue use to go forward anywhere in the village business zone. The board requests town meeting approval of this approach by approving this motion. I would also like to submit the following planning board report. On Tuesday, April 9, 2019, the planning board held a public hearing to review and discuss proposed amendments to the Douglas zoning bylaws as follows. One, by amending the zoning map as codified through section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws, by moving the following assessor's maps, parcels, 16316, 16329, 16330, 16335, and 17026, from the village residential zoning district to village business zoning district. Two, by amending subsection C of the use schedule as found at section 3.1.3 of the zoning bylaws, appendix A, by adding a new use, function hall, which shall be permitted by a special permit from the planning board in the VB district and prohibited in all other districts. Three, by adding a new definition in section 10 of the zoning bylaws as follows, function hall, a venue for hosting weddings, conferences, banquet, and other similar events with or without accessory dining facilities. The planning board closed the public hearing on the same evening and voted to issue a favorable report to town meeting regarding the proposed changes. Tracy Sharkey, Planning Board Vice Chair.
Any questions on Article 18? Seeing none? I'm sorry?
He showed up on the big screen.
Not much to it. That's the wrong one? That's the wrong one. That's the only one I have, Bill. The only other, it's not that one, is it? I'm sorry? Figure two. Help me out with that one. Help me out with that a little bit. Oh, you mean on the... Does everybody have a bulletin with them? We are referring to the very back. Figure two. Does everybody know what we're talking about now? Okay. Because by the time I actually get the internet up, it's... Well, the over would win. So further questions on this article? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Right here?
Thank you. Bruce Thomas, 23 Gilboa Street. I believe I understand what we're talking about. This is right on Route 16. This is a large house that sits back. Is that the area we're talking about? And you're going to propose to change that from the current zoning, which must be R1, to something that includes having the ability to put on parties, weddings, functions like that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are the abutters allowed to put voice to this before this happens? Is there someone specifically, current owner, or maybe someone they have commissioned to buy the property from them, involved? I'd like to have more information about this before I place a vote on this.
Thank you. Matt? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, thank you for the question. There's more information that you've put out. So...
All right, hold on, hold on.
This area of town begins roughly at that waterfall right before you get to the driveway. It includes the lot where the large mansion is located, or large home. And then all of the backland behind it, which is a separate parcel but is currently out in common ownership with the large home. And then there are some smaller lots. There's a private access point there which has been part of a subdivision that has been approved by the Planning Board but not yet filed by the owner. This gets complicated, but it's important. The owner is in bankruptcy and trustee has been named. So all of this property could be sold to satisfy the debt obligations of the debtor. If the new owner were to file the subdivision, it is already approved. You would see homes built on these parcels. And you may or may not see the historic Schuster Mansion, who's basically, it sounds like a sexist term, but it's always been used, one of the town founders, one of the founders and more prosperous industrialists of the town, that may not necessarily survive. So if proposal came forward to attempt to save the building by using it as a wedding venue and to forego the subdivision of the land, to keep it all held together. I think the town expressed a potential interest in, for conservation purposes, taking that body of water in the dam there just to alleviate the new owner from that obligation. But that's just a talking point. Nothing was decided. In order to have that type of use in that building, you have to change the zoning of that parcel. Because right now it's a zoning designation called Village Residential. It's much higher density than Residential 1. The lot's going to be smaller. You're going to build more homes. So the notion here is there's kind of a significant change to the character of the town. It could happen. What the Board of Selectmen is recommending, what they discussed, is create the possibility that somebody could save the lot in the method contemplated for a singular commercial venture that isn't explicitly allowed in the zoning table right now. It could be allowed in a village business. So just one last point. To the west of this lot, there is village business. There are lots designated village business already. To the east of this lot, there is a substantial portion of the town's village business district. So you would now be connecting those two areas of village business by redesignating these lots village business. It would be one continuous zone for village business.
Is your question an answer? You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
So, if you were going to attempt to save the Schuster Mansion, how many acres is this, all of this property, that would be a part of that potential project?
We're getting close to the scope of the article. This article isn't about a specific project. I understand that there's a lot of discussion about a potential project, but the project doesn't exist. This is about changing the zoning of a particular piece of property. And I know that there's a fine line there between the two, so I'm going to let this go, but only just a little bit further. And as part of that, I would ask that you would describe the next part of the process of what would happen in order for a venue like that to occur.
Sure. Mr. Moderator, thank you. The moderator actually gave you the answer that I could give you, which is that until we actually have a live proposal in hand, it doesn't fully exist yet. We can't commit for any potential private owner what they would do with the rest of the land. As you know, if you're observing, the backland is very wet. Doesn't have very much development potential. It's that forward piece. Should a proposal come forward and this motion has passed, as Ms. Sharkey points out, you would still need a special use permit granted by the Planning Board through a public hearing process to use the property as a wedding venue. You would still have to inform the abutters and allow that process to run. This simply opens the door for a proposal to come in and be able to use their property in that fashion as of right, as opposed to a use variance, which is very difficult to obtain.
Other questions?
Pam Holmes, 108 Maple Street. I have a question. It's a zoning change, and so you have a public hearing. Were the abutters notified?
Yes. Other questions? Only if the words "mobile," "oil," "gas line" are not part of the question? Okay, please, go ahead.
This land coming off of Main Street goes all the way up to Brookside Drive, which is just in front of Railroad Avenue. That's pretty much a grown-up area, but it extends all the way to the Main Street. That large area, all the way up to almost Railroad Avenue, that's a large piece of property.
Other questions? Over here?
Howard D'Amico, 55 Old Farm Road. Is the current holder of the ownership interest the bankruptcy trustee or the debtor still in possession of the interest? Who's the owner right now?
You want to know?
Better answer than I do. I think the answer is the trustee was just named Howard. Just like, this is hot off the presses news. The current debtor owner is still in possession. He still resides there.
Follow-up? Go ahead.
It just makes the difference if we know. Is it in Chapter 7 or in Chapter 11? Is it a reorganization or a liquidation? Don't know.
Other questions? Mr. Moderator?
Mark Manjum, 20 Depot Street. I just wanted to clarify, is the old fire station included in this zoning change?
Just look at the map. No. Yeah, whoa! Arm wrestle. Oh, Matt wins this match. The answer was yes, it is. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Would anyone like to speak on the article?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead.
The owner of that property is still living in town and his property is up for sale. There is a sign outside of his property that it is up for sale. So obviously, he does not own it. He owns it and he's looking to sell it. It is still for sale. You know, just to let you know.
Anyone else like to speak on the article? Question been called. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of voting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Ayes have it. All those in favor of Article 18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The Article 18 does need a two-thirds majority in order to pass. I declare it does pass by a two-thirds majority. Article 19. Mr. Bonen?
I move that the town vote to approve the payment in lieu of personal property tax pilot agreement between the town and Douglas Renewables LLC as en filed in the office of the town clerk in accordance with Chapter 59, Section 38H of the General Laws of Massachusetts, as amended in the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Regulations adopted in connection therewith or any other law applicable thereto.
Second. Motion made and seconded. You have the floor.
There's been a considerable controversy in Massachusetts arising from the taxation of solar farms. Massachusetts law does allow municipalities and solar developers to enter into so-called payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreements to provide for a revenue stream to the town without technically taxing the solar development. Most solar developers agree to these terms, as customary in their business all across the country to do so. The town has secured agreements with two solar developments in town, one we're acting today in this article, at the rate of $7,500 per megawatt hour of electricity generation, increasing at 2.5% for every year for the next 20 years. These revenues are substantially higher than the taxes earned on the currently vacant properties where these solar farms are being built. Town meeting approval is required for all pilot agreements, and it is recommended and requested by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Any questions on this article? Right next to you.
Eric Campbell, 17 Woodland Road. Referring to the explanation, $48,750 in year one, an increase 2.5% every year thereafter. Two-part question. What's the current value of the tax on that property? Part two, is the 2.5% increase through the 20-year period, can that be voided by any activities such as change in ownership? Or is it locked in for 20 years?
Thank you. Bill? Anyone want that one? Nope. Matt? Okay. Hot potato on that one, Bill.
All right, I'm trying to remember both parts of your question. The last part first. The 2.5 is locked in for all 20 years of the life of the project. So there are clauses in the private agreement, all successors and assigns are subject to the same terms. Your first question was, what is the current revenue stream coming from those properties? It should be a different answer by project, but I believe this is the project of a portion of West Street. Right, that's this one. So you've got, I believe, two parcels involved. One is in 61, and will have to come out of 61. As you know, Chapter 61 values are very low. The other is currently being taxed, but I believe it is a landlocked lot and is discounted heavily as a result. So you're looking at $45,000 or more for this particular parcel, whereas right now you're getting 10, 12, 13.
Other questions? Over here?
Daniel Laura, 120 Wildland Lake Road. When this project was proposed, one of the selling points was that we were going to bring in a lot of tax revenue from this project. Are we selling something off? I know you're talking about what the current revenue is, and there's nothing on the land, so there's not a lot. But I think the question was asked previously, but I'm not sure how clear it is. Which is higher, this $48,000 or what the project would be actually taxed at?
Matt? Want that one?
I'll try to answer by saying this way. Thank you for the question because it's a good comparison to make if we were allowed to make it. So if you're following these cases as they go through court, and it's been covered somewhat in the regional newspaper, those communities that have attempted to tax solar farms outright using their existing tax authority have been told that they do not have the authority to do so. So you have several of our sister communities, and I would say most especially the Charlton, looking at substantial difficulties because they've been taxing these solar farms outright and not entering into the agreements. When we look at, we're really looking at two different bases completely. So we're now looking at the value of the asset, we're charging them on the basis of the energy that they generate, which is a different form of taxation. If we were taxing them on the value of the asset, solar panels actually depreciate, so they go down in value by about 2% every single year. So by year 20, they would be substantially devalued. So unless the town's tax rate kept pace, you wouldn't necessarily see a revenue, you would potentially see a revenue decrease over those 20 years. The purpose of a pilot agreement and the way it defends the town is that it will go up the maximum amount allowed on the profit 2.5, regardless of what happens at town leading to the taxes. So this will go up 2.5% every single year for the next 20 years. No, it's not a direct answer to your question, because I haven't sat down and... You would need the actual value of the asset. It would have to have been built and valued in the inventory taken. But we consult on a regular basis with experts who work in this field, and this is the so-called going rate for solar farms that municipalities can be able to achieve.
You have a follow-up? Okay.
I attended one public hearing, a Planning Board meeting, and watched the other on closed-circuit TV. Was this pilot project brought up at the time? Because I was remembering that it's going to bring in all kinds of tax revenue, not just paying this out, like that they're going to pay us X amount.
Mr. Moderator? Please. Please.
I can't speak for what other people have said or not said on whether or not they've used adequate precision in describing the form of revenue to the town would receive. What I can say is that factually, the pilot payments will be substantially higher than the existing taxation of those existing parcels and is competitive with what it would have been if it had been taxed outright. To really know what that final value, all the choices that you're making, this is not the Walland Lake proposal, but that's the next article. You would have to compare it to, what will the houses bring in? But what would the houses bring in in terms of costs as well? So, net-net for the town, a passive asset that collects energy from the sun and doesn't send children to schools and doesn't require us to plow streets is an attractive option for these properties that are relatively isolated.
Other questions? Is it a question?
Yes, it is. It's a suggestion and a question. Yes, it is.
Okay. Last time I asked you, it was a question. It wasn't a question.
Well, it is a question. Yes, it is.
Last chance. Go ahead.
What is the property that used to belong to Granitec being used for now as there is a group of vehicles there that it's called B&amp;B Insulation, which seems to be the company that's putting in the solar panels in town? Have you by any chance gone and visited with them to find out what's going on and what the ramifications of what they're doing will be?
Mr. Moderator? This is still on? I'm very happy... I'm very happy to have a conversation after with you on those things. But this article is specifically about the pilot agreement on this law. These two are.
Other questions? Question? Second? All those in favor of ending discussion, moving on to a vote, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes clearly have it. All those in favor of Article 19, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Article 19 needs a simple majority, which it clearly has. Article 19 passes. Article 20.
I move that the town vote to approve the payment in lieu of personal property tax, the pilot agreement between the town and ASD Wallam, Mass. Solar LLC as enfiled in the office of the town clerk in accordance with Chapter 59, Section 38H of the General Laws of Massachusetts as amended in the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Regulations adopted in connection therewith or any other law applicable thereto.
Motion made in second, do you have a follow-up?
Very similar to the previous article, the town has secured agreements with ASD Wallam, Mass. Solar LLC at the rate of $7,500 per megawatt hour of electricity generation, increasing at 2.5% every year for the next 20 years. These revenues are substantially higher than the taxes earned on the currently vacant properties where the solar farms are being built. Town meeting approval is required for all pilot agreements and it is recommended and requested by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Questions on Article 20? Seeing in the back? Just under the wire.
Jennifer Dobtrich, 3 Angel Road. Our neighborhood has expressed great displeasure in the fact that there's been no consideration about what's going to happen to the lake, what's going to happen to the people who live along the lake, that this very small amount of money is going to ruin and flood many homes.
Is there a question coming?
It is a good project in a bad place.
Is there a question coming?
I'm not. No, it's a comment.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none? Would anyone like to speak on the article? Would you like to finish your thought?
It has been a very disheartening process of how in little interest the people affected by this are... We just don't matter. It's been very disappointing.
Would anyone else like to speak on the article? Okay, seeing none? Article 20 needs a simple majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes clearly have it. Article 20 passes. Article 21. Dave's not here, man. I move that the town vote to accept Parcel A, as shown in a plan dated November 3, 1995, and prepared by Andrews Survey and Engineering Incorporated, set plan being on file at the town clerk's office, in Worcester County Registry of Deeds as Plan Book 700, Plan 87, as a public way, a continuation of Darling Way, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the deed for such way what takes aim under the eminent domain of authority. Motion made in second, do you have a follow-up? This will correct the road acceptance begun last year. It was Article 21. This small slice of land was overlooked and must be added to the original acceptance. Any questions? Seeing none? Would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none? Is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none? Article 21 passes unanimously. Oh, in one second? This is where I get my speech about volunteering again at every meeting. These are some of the boards and committee openings that we have out there right now. Please consider volunteering your time, no matter what your talents are, no matter how much time you have. There's something you can do to help better the town, and the town as a whole appreciates any and all commitments that you can make now. I heard something. This motion to adjourn, is there a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.